Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's June 11th and we're calling the Common Council Meeting to Order. I will ask the clerk to call the roll to establish a quorum.
Elder Person Keen, here.
Novak.
Here.
Noling.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Turner.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
Here.
Grove.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Halverson.
Here.
Ten present.
Okay, please rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Elder Woman Keen. Okay, we'll move on to Part D of our agendas. We have six public hearings this evening, and I will ask our clerk to read out Public Hearing Number One.
Ordinance to rezone various properties on the north side of the 6,400 block of West Greenfield Avenue to C3 and P and create a planned unit development overlay district.
Thank you. Turn it over to staff when you're ready. Thanks, Mayor. I'm Steve Sherman, the manager of Planning and Zoning, and the first hearing this evening is with reference to a couple underutilized properties, actually five to be exact, between 64th and 65th and Greenfield Avenue. The city's identified this as a redevelopment plan over the past year, and recently at the interest of a developer, JHH Development, who is interested in these five parcels of land and doing a mixed-use redevelopment of this property with eight townhome units as well as another 11 apartment units, and then reorientating the green space, which is currently location number one here, over to part of parcels four and five on the southwest corner of the site. So with that, the changes that we'll get into later, I have the development plans in the later part of this presentation, but the main focus of this presentation tonight for this public hearing is the rezoning from commercial, in some cases, to different types of commercial is when converting some properties from residential to commercial and then creating a planned development or planned unit development overlay. So this is the existing zoning map showing the current project area. Everything outlined within that black dashed area is the subject location of this redevelopment and the areas to be rezoned. The frontage along Greenfield Avenue is currently C3 zoning, and then the small lot, which is currently a parking lot, surface parking lot to the northwest is C2 commercial, and then you have an RB residential zoning district on the northeast parcel, which is also a surface parking lot. All of these parcels will be rezoned from, you know, the individual zonings to C3 commercial, and then over the top of that, within that hashed area, a planned unit development. The purpose of the planned unit development is that under conventional zoning, under the C3 zoning, for instance, you can only have one principal building on a lot or one principal use on that lot. The planned unit development offers the developer a little bit more flexibility in having more than one principal building, and we'll get into the actual development proposal, site planning, later, but they propose two individual principal use buildings on this, the main lot, between 64th and 65th and Greenfield and south of that alley. And then additionally, under conventional zoning, you can't have a freestanding principal use parking lot in a C3 or a commercial zoning district. It has to be associated with a use on that lot. So the planned unit development in this case that's going to be created is an overlay district over the underlying zoning is going to create that flexibility for the developer to realize this vision, and in return, you know, the city benefits by, you know, improving and redeveloping underutilized land within this Greenfield Avenue corridor area. So this is the future, I guess, the rezoning that would take place along Greenfield Avenue. You'd have the overall properties rezoned to C3 and then the park district being created in that lower southwest corner. And then in summary of the different changes that would be taking place here, the 6,400 property, which is area number one here, that's currently a green space, it's zone C3 commercial, and a planned unit development district would be overlaid over the top of this entire area as outlined in blue. Parcel number two here is a property, a surface parking lot, zoned RB, that would be rezoned to commercial, and then with that PUD overlay, the land use map being amended from underutilized to commercial mixed use. And then the parcel three, which is a surface parking lot, being rezoned from C2 to C3 commercial with a PUD planned unit development overlay district, the land use map being amended from underutilized to commercial mixed use, and then both properties, the number four and five, they're currently zone C3 but having that PUD overlay over the top. And then this green space here would be a future park that would be dedicated to the city. It will be improved by the developer and created by the developer and then dedicated to the city. The developer would, as part of a development agreement, would continue to maintain that area for the city, but that area also being dedicated, land use map being amended to park, from commercial mixed use to park. In terms of the actual development proposal itself, so we talked about the rezoning, which is the main purpose of this, of this public hearing, but in terms of why rezone, this is the, I guess, the proposed eventual redevelopment that is being proposed, and it was, went before the city's planning commission for design review last month. It will also be, there's a development agreement being crafted by the developer and our economic development team, and that development agreement would come before the communities, the community development authority, and it'll come back to the Common Council July 10th. But in terms of the exterior look for this, for this property, it varies between a two-story and a three-story development. The apartments that would be, or, I'm sorry, the townhomes would be located a little bit further west on, towards 65th Street, would be the two-story variety with walkout patios and porches, two-story units, individual, the eight townhome units within this area, parking accessible from the alley behind along with an additional slab, and then the mixed-use building would also feature a little bit of a step up, and that'd be on the corner of 64th and Greenfield Avenue, featuring a lap siding material, large windows wrapping around the entire building, some rail balconies and multiple patios being incorporated within that development. The unique portion, part of that mixed-use building is that it will have a retail component, about a 2,500 square foot retail component on the ground floor fronting Greenfield Avenue, and that retail component will open up to the future park area facing Greenfield Avenue and 65th Street. It will have a westerly view, more sunshine, and openness and interaction with Greenfield Avenue. In terms of floor plans, the mixed-use building has a lower two-bedroom unit apartment, storage lockers, hallway stair access. The first floor has two one-bedroom units, a commercial, with a commercial space, and in terms of the, and the second and third floor have a total of eight units. The unit mix itself, within the mixed-use building, it will have six one-bedroom units, two one-bedroom units with dens, and then three two-bedroom units. The floor areas range between, you know, eight to 950 square feet, and then the eight townhome units are all three bedrooms and approximately about 1,700, just under 1,700 square feet apiece. And then different lot sizes, the five parcels being consolidated into four parcels as part of a certified survey map process, also on the agenda this evening, and again, just sort of the mix of uses. Lot one here is the, just from plan view, looking down on this, these are the eight townhome units in lot one, and then also on lot one is a separate building. This is the mixed-use building with the lower unit retail as well as 11 apartments. And then lot two is, will continue to be surface parking, lot three will continue to be surface parking, and then the outlot is a, about a 6,000 square foot park that would be dedicated to the city on the southwest corner. There would be a total of 16 garage stalls for the townhomes, one garage per townhome as well as an additional slab behind, behind this off of the alley, so a total of 16 for the townhomes, and then about 25 parking stalls for the combination of the retail use as well as the apartments, and that would be accommodated in lots two and three here and a small number of parking stalls here on lot one. And those would be divvied up amongst the retail as well as the different apartment units. And that, that distribution or delineation is just conceptually shown here, but the brighter pink-red color here is the retail parking area, about nine parking stalls, and then these blue areas are for the different tenants within the 11-unit apartment building, and then the townhomes have these, an interior garage space on the ground floors, you come in off of the alley, as well as an offset garage or slab right behind the garage area. There is additional on-street parking within the area. This is just a small sample shown around the street frontages of Greenfield Avenue respective of the bus stop. Developers also seeking a loading drop-off zone at the corner of 64th and Greenfield Avenue. That would be arranged through our city's engineering department via permit, and alley access would continue to be maintained. This is a T alley that extends north-south from Madison Street down to an east-west alley that runs in, between east-west, between 64th and 65th Street. All that would remain public. There is a small amount of dedication being offered by the developer to the city for some additional alley right-of-way. That was a request of our city engineering department, but other than that, the, the surface parking behind this area will primarily be very similar to how it appears now. So, planning commission has recommended approval. The public, this has been noticed in the official paper, notice has been sent out to properties within 200 feet. Received two objections with respect to the loss of green space at the corner of 64th and Greenfield. However, I would note that, you know, this is part of a larger redevelopment plan where also there is mitigation of that green space that's taking place from 64th Street over to 65th Street, and that future park space that's being proposed as part of this development does align with 65th, and if you go north and south on 65th, it runs directly into our farmer's market and those redevelopment area further south of National, and if you take 65th North, it does run past this development as well as a future development area, the, that includes Motor Castings. That site has been demolished, and the city's actively trying to redevelop that. So I'll turn it over to Sean next, but this concludes my public hearing, and if there's any questions, thank you. Mr. Miller, are you doing hearing number two?
I am, Mayor DeVine.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure if you were partnering on public hearing number one. Thank you. Are there any questions on public hearing number one from the Common Council members? All right. Are there any questions or comments on public hearing number one from the members of the audience? If there is, please go up to the podium and sign in either before or after your comments, and then hit the bottom right button to turn on your microphone, and then please give us your name and address, just so we have it for our record. You can go whenever you're ready. It's up here.
So sign in first?
You can sign in after your comments if you want.
Okay, I have a question about-
Can you give us your name and address though, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Kelly Star King. I live at 6330 West Greenfield Avenue, so our condominium faces the park right now. I guess there's several of us here who are wondering what the logic is of taking the big, beautiful, mature trees, which is half of that property, and reducing it to a smaller park on the other side. I did hear the corridor down to the farmer's market, but is it possible to save some of those trees on that side, still have, you know, have this project come to fruition, but save some of those trees? And I don't know who I'm talking to if I'm talking to you or-
Probably towards staff, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, has it been considered, you know, that all of our west-facing units, and there's some of our residents here today, they're going to be facing, they're looking at a beautiful park right now. All those are going to be gone, so what is going to be in its place, I think, is the most important thing for us if, if this project, and I guess I would like to know how far along is this project? Is this a sure thing, this is happening, or do we have a say in the matter at this point?
This is the, the public hearing this evening for consideration of the rezoning. The rezoning is one of the necessary steps that sets the stage for, you know, the future redevelopment of this site, and the city is, you know, as part of its comprehensive planning and strategic vision, we need to redevelop sites that are underutilized within the city, and that is a beautiful green space on the corner of 64th and Greenfield. It's been there for a number of years. It has 12, you know, fairly, you know, very mature trees, and to set the stage for redevelopment, we, we looked at a number of different alternatives, ranging from adaptive reuse of the existing buildings that are there, the Spotlight Lounge and the Crawdaddy's Building, and it was an adaptive reuse for a restaurant, a notable restaurant in the metropolitan area, and unfortunately, that, that deal didn't come together for the adaptive reuse. That would've, that would've maintained the, the park, you know, the green space on 64th and Greenfield, and just renovated the existing buildings on site. That, that deal didn't go forward. The developer, in that case, walked away. We looked at another redevelopment with another developer, which would have been more density, taller buildings, and again, some, some removal of that, of that park for, you know, for buildings, and like a plaza of sorts, but those trees would've gone with that proposal as well. In working with JHH, their, their development plan calls for mid-range, it's, it's less density, it's not, it's not as dense as the prior redevelopment plan, and so it's fewer units, and we think it fits the scale of the neighborhood. They did take some consideration into, you know, keeping things as-is with the park. However, that would've meant that they would've had to, if building around that park, they would've been doing underground parking, you know, as sort of the, the surface layer with taller building around the park, and it would've, it, it wouldn't have necessarily fit the scale because you would've had to build out the lot right up to that north property line, perhaps over, you know, removing the, it would've been a lot denser than, than it's currently proposed. We feel that this is a good balance between, between what we've, we've seen from other developers, and we feel it's respective of the neighborhood's scale. We understand that, you know, you're losing a, a green space across the street, however, it's, it's being mitigated, it's being, you're gaining, you're gaining a green space that's going to be potentially more programmed and more active and invisible along Greenfield Avenue.
But how much-
It's going to have more sunlight.
How much smaller is this green space than the existing?
It's 6,000 square feet, so the existing park is about 12,000 square feet.
Yeah.
No. That's a misprint. Then it's, the, the outlot is, that's being proposed is 6,000 square feet. The existing green space that's there right now is about 12,000 square feet.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
12,000 square feet.
Okay.
So the existing, I mean, we're, the existing area is, it's a, it's a path with some benches, and it's very shady. Now, there's mature trees, which are wonderful, but I think with the new development and the creation of an active retail space, the relocation of the park to the corner of 65th and Greenfield is going to play into the public and the public realm along Greenfield Avenue, activating the street a bit more, as well as promoting, you know, future businesses within this development, and it's still, it's still a park, it's still going to be in your neighborhood, right next door.
Okay. The units that are looking into the park right now, you made mention of asking the city for a shipping and receiving lane. What's going to be on the side of the building that's facing, we're facing, it's on our west side, so what's going to be on your easternmost side of the building that our residents are going to be looking directly at? A shipping and receiving lane?
No, you'll be looking at, you know, the same street that's there today. The difference that I, that I indicated here with the drop-off, they're, they're showing some handicap, accessible loading areas along Greenfield Avenue and 64th, right here in the quarters.
Yeah, right, yup, up, right, right there.
So this faces your street. There's two parking stalls.
Okay. What's on that side of the building? Is that going to be shipping and receiving, factory looking, or what, what's, do you have anything that shows us that side of the building? So our residents who are here now looking at this beautiful park, which is not underutilized, by the way, we overlook this park, it's utilized.
This is the look of the building. There, there's windows all around this building.
Do you have the backside of the building? I mean, I'm looking at the cafe in the top right, right?
Yeah. It'll look very similar to this. This is actually the, the west side, and unfortunately, my slides aren't advancing, so I'm stuck just sort of clicking on this, so I don't have, I could, I could meet with you afterward during recess and show you more detail on what that east elevation does look like from your view from the condos.
Wonderful. And I don't know who's speaking. Is that you behind the computer? I can't see our-
Yes.
Who's, all right, thank you. I'm, I'm looking for a mouth moving. Okay. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you. Anybody else have questions on this public hearing item? Go, go ahead.
My name is Scott Schwendeman. Thanks, everyone, for giving us an opportunity to voice our opinions on this. Looks like a great project. I wish it was flipped 180 degrees, and we could save most of those trees. The trees really are just part of the issue. It says up there that lot one is 1,966 feet and it is zoned park currently. Is that correct?
No. I don't know what, where you, what are you referring to?
Right there, lot one.
Yeah, lot one is this L-shaped on its side. This is, this is the park, the 12,500 square foot green space that's there today plus-
What number is that?
Number one.
It says 1,966, six, doesn't it?
Yeah, let me, let me go back a couple, just to help you out there. So here's the, here is what is today. Number one is the, is the green space that you're referring to at 6,400 Greenfield Avenue, which is 12,000 square feet.
Where's the other six? Or seven thousand?
That's all that, that's all that is today. If you were to take the boundaries of that park, which includes surface parking lot and the green space, that's 12,000 square feet. That's what you're, if you live east of here, that's what you look at, surface parking and green space.
So I still don't understand the discrepancy. Maybe you can help me with that. Where's the other seven thousand square feet?
What's happening is with, yeah, what's happening is with the, the difference in the, let me go, the consolidation of lots is what's taking place to create lot one, and then parts of lot five, four and five to create that L shape, which is 19,000 square feet. So if I could, Steve, lot, lot four and five are the, the 6,000 feet you're asking for. It's the building? Yes.
Okay. I guess my other concern, and it was brought up by the first speaker, are there any time restraints? I used to live next to a restaurant and constantly was woken up at two or three in the morning when deliveries hit, when the back of the truck drops down. I'm concerned about ambient light. We've had that issue transgressing off of the old Alice Chalmers Building, which is at least two and a half, maybe three blocks away from us, lighting up that side of the building. I don't know what the code issues are in regards to the decibels that we can handle there, but if we have an active loading zone right there, that changes the whole complex of that street as it currently exists. And you're impacting not only those 11 people that are on that side of our complex, but that will roll into the rest of the units too, as appraisals hit and people sell and get out of Dodge. That's a big concern for our building as a whole. If this project was just flipped, you could have that park there to a certain extent. You'd have commercial on the other side, where another commercial building is on the other side, a restaurant. There is no corridor right now to the park, or the farmer's market, unless you want to count National Avenue, which runs parallel to it. I would say that's the corridor.
We're also looking at redeveloping further north in the, north and west of the Motor Castings site along 65th Street.
Well, I just want to focus on, on this issue-
Sure.
And how it impacts the people that own that park, us, the citizens of West Alice.
So I'm sorry, sir, are you asking a question, or I guess I'm missing it if you are?
I asked a couple of questions in regards to the decibels allowed.
Well, the deci-
The timeframe for deliveries, what size trucks, what kind of lighting is going to be there?
We have rules on hours of operation depending on what the use will be. There are restrictions on, I'm, I'm, that's me talking now.
Thank you.
There's the, there is display limitations on the lighting for whatever would go in there. There are decibel levels at certain reading points from the distance of, you know, from your residences to the, whatever goes in there, which would be enforced, and there are also quiet hours in the city after, I believe it's after 10:00 PM and before 6:00 AM, or 7:00, 7:00 AM.
Well, that's comforting. I just hope you all do your diligence in regards to those, to make it livable for the people that are there now. I think that's really important.
Mm-hmm. I think it's all about balance.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
And thank you too for answering my questions.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments on public hearing number one?
Hi, good evening. You know, I'm all for development in West Alice, and I, I moved to 6330 Greenfield in September of 2010, and I purchased my unit based on that green space. So when I, I'm on the third floor, so when you walk into my unit, my, I have patio doors and then picture windows on either side of the patio door, so when you walk in, you see that beautiful green space. And like the first speaker mentioned, that green space is used by the neighborhood, and with neighbors that have dogs, and they do pick up after their dogs, and there's benches there, people sit there and read, there are several benches, and all of our condos have been reassessed in May, and it really is the first assessment since I've been in my condo in 14 years, and now I'm concerned as to when I, if I were to sell my condo, and they walk in, and are they going to see concrete? You know, and that's my biggest concern. Are my taxes going to grow up, but the view is not going to be there? And that's my biggest concern, because it's been assessed higher, but I may not be able to sell it at the right value, and- And, and I have the same concerns as the second speaker with regards to lighting and sound, and I think it's a beautiful project. I mean, but I would like to see it flipped, as Scott mentioned. Why do we want to cut down 11, 12 trees? Or could we just take half of that green space, or a quarter of it? I don't know. I just, I think it's going to devalue my property. And I love where I live, but I think it's going to devalue it. But thank you.
Can you just give us your name and address?
Oh, sure. It's Barbara Hudek. It's Unit 6,330 West Greenfield Avenue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have questions or comments on public hearing number one? All right, then we will close. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Chair is for just, I, City of Milwaukee, public school teacher for 20 years, born and raised in Milwaukee, always comes to West Alice, I always come to West Alice. I, um, I see a depreciation in the development. There's no integrity in, in the structure of the community. It seems to me like you had said project, yeah, like future projects. What about the water resources? You're adding 27 units? Isn't that like, doesn't that weigh on the water resources of a community as well?
I think that, if I could, sorry, Steve, just, yeah, I mean, the fact that the City of West Alice used to have a population of over 72,000 people back in the 1980s, I don't think that that's, we're at 60,000 right now. And, yeah, and three factories, and we did have even bakeries that used a lot of water back when they were open, so I don't think we're near capacity on that. I don't know if you have anything more to add?
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is 19 units that are being added to, to the property.
Does that conclude your questions? All right. Does anybody else have comments or questions on public hearing number one? Well, we can always talk during recess, too, if, you know, as, as staff breaks. I mean, if you have another quick one, you can ask it, but...
I just want to ask, maybe we should consider moving the project a little bit this way and keep a couple of the trees on the bench. That would solve it.
Sure. Thanks. If there's nothing else on public hearing number one, then we will move on to public hearing number two, and I will ask our clerk to read that out.
Resolution approving the sale of lands located at the following addresses, 6,400 West Greenfield Avenue and 1351 South 64th Street.
I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Sean Miller. I'm the Development Project Manager for the City of West Alice. This, this item is to fulfill a statutory requirement. Anytime the city is selling excess lands, there's a public hearing required. So this is a little bit of a unique one in that two of the five parcels are actually city-owned, Parcells 1 and 2 that you see on the map here, and then the other three parcels, 4, 5, or 3, 4, and 5, are actually owned by the CDA. So there'll be a, there'll be a public hearing in regards to the sale of those three parcels next Tuesday and June 18th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. At that meeting, there will be more, more of the development agreement details and things of that nature will be discussed, and will be on that agenda. What we're just talking about to fulfill this requirement of these two parcels is the, the public hearing for the sale of the 12,000 square foot public space, Parcel 1, and then the near 4,800 square foot parking lot area of Parcel 2. Steve has really covered all of the, the bullet points that I had here in regards to the reuse of the public space and some of the design and planning that went into this. And the idea behind the development is sort of to fulfill this missing middle housing that the city currently does not offer. The city had a residential market study completed in 2021 that, you know, laid out the, you know, it, it's a little bit of an obvious point, but that this isn't, this is a housing type that we do not currently offer and is in high demand and is needed in the area. So this design lent itself to meet that, that need. Just in general, the, more of the details are going to be talked about at future meetings. I just want to lay out the schedules that you are all aware of it. CDA sale of public land and development agreement, June 18th, as I talked about. Development agreement, then we'll come back to the council on July 10th. Then we have a joint review board meeting for the creation of the TIF on July 23rd. And then, you know, if, if all went well, the construction would begin, and then would take about a year to complete. Be happy to take any questions that anyone may have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Are there any questions from the members of the common council on public hearing number two?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigl.
Sean, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, as was mentioned earlier. Other development ideas were brought forward for these parcels and couldn't be made to be, to cash flow or couldn't come to fruition. Staff was given directive from this council to protect the park or maintain a park space in that area. Would it be fair to say if we just eliminated the park that some sort of other bigger developments would be forthcoming because it would offer a little more opportunity for a developer? Developers don't do these things out of the goodness of their heart. They, these, these things need to make money.
Right. And that's, and that's a big part of, a, a, a big part of this, too, is the elevation of, of it. It drops down as you go back into the parking area. So if you had to build over that parking area, it creates a difficult economic situation. You really would have to add a number of levels of density in order to make it cash flow.
Yeah, so it would have to be, it would have to be maybe five stories tall.
It's your typical kind of four stories over parking, five, you know, five stories. Yeah. And so that's, that was looked at, and that is a, that is a development also that's in need in the area, the more how, the area needs housing. But the, the decision on this was to lower the density and create something that kind of transitions into the neighborhood nicely and fulfills a housing need that the city has.
Yes. So, so I'm, I'm not going to say that it's like this deal or nothing, but it could sit another two, three, four years with obviously no activity, no taxable value, no people living there, no people working there, no energy. The park is nice. I, I would suggest that we be as aggressive on, on keeping that green space nice as possible. And I understand, although they're going to give the green space to the city, the development's going to be responsible for maintaining it, so that won't even be on the city. I think, you know, we talked about this in the CDA about the trees. It was, it was, it was a conversation there, and trees will be planted. And yes, it'll take 20 years for the trees to get big, but somebody planted those trees probably 40, 50 years ago, and, and they wouldn't live forever either way, right? So I understand that this, there's going to be some people that are unhappy with the change of the view, but it will be a brand-new building up to the best aesthetic standards that we have. I think we see some typical, what the building looks like. It's not going to be a cement wall. Will there be porches and patios on the east side? Remember?
Yes.
I see a head nod from the developer. So, yeah, so it'll be a nice-looking building. And that, that loading zone before is down below, is really just going to be a loading zone, essentially, right? There's not going to be any special equipment there, or anything, loading docks, or anything?
It's more of a, the, for today's consumers, you know, DoorDash-type thing, quick drop-off, if you had a cafe or a little restaurant there, just a spot to be able to drop off, pick up, type thing, but not meant for large trucks or...
Does the mayor have a loading dock there, someone might be on Twitter?
Right, correct. It's, it's meant to be, fit into the neighborhood and, and not make big changes in that, in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigl. Any other questions from the members of the council? Seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience on public hearing number two? All right, seeing none, we will close public hearing number two. I will ask our clerk to read out public hearing number three.
Vacation and discontinuance of an improved alley between West Lincoln Avenue and West Grant Street and within the 2,200 block of South 108th Street and South 109th Street.
Thank you. Turn it over to staff. Thanks, Mayor. This section of Alleyway extends from Grant, Grant Street, which is just north of Lincoln Avenue and west of Highway 100. And it extends and ends in the, in, that ends into the Health Hut, basically, at the Lincoln Plaza. And it's being proposed, our city engineering department is, city's basically petitioning the council to, to vacate this section of alley right of way. It is, it has been improved last year, and there has been outreach to the neighborhood, and just basically indicating the proposed alley vacation. There's only one address, one garage, residential garage that, or lot that benefits from this small little chunk of right of way, so, and that is this property here on 109th. Their alley, or their garage backs up and is serviced by this alley. With the vacation process, the property is split. Half of it goes to abutting property owners, in this case, to the east, and the other half go to the property owners to the, to the west, and it becomes private and taxable property maintained by the future property owners. So this is just the area that would be vacated. There has been public notice to the four butters along, along the stretch of Alleyway. And the zoning, there's currently no need to change zoning in this area. Should ownership change, and say the benefactor, I guess, of the butters, let's say here on the, on the east, these residential properties, if, if the gas station here were to deed their, their property over to the residential property owners, you know, we would, we need to take a look at rezoning this. But in the current configuration, the idea is that the properties to the, to the east would obtain half of the alley, the property owners to the west would obtain the other half, and the zoning could stay as-is. So no, no zoning map changes at this time are recommended. The planning commission has reviewed this and has recommended common council approval. No, we've received no objections to date, to my knowledge, and people may certainly object to this. And should people object, you know, the council can decide, and still decide to, you know, vacate it or not, but it would require two-thirds vote of the council to override any objection. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Are there questions from the council members on public hearing number three?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Keane.
Just so I have that right, so the residents, the two garages there, those are residential houses. So by vacating this, that portion of that would become part of their owned property, and then they would be responsible for snow removal in winter?
That's correct.
And, yeah, and then most alleys have garbage pickup. Is that garbage pickup in the alley, or do they bring it out front?
I don't know often. I'd have to touch base with our DPW, but one of the issues that if, if they're traveling, if the sanitation vehicles traveling down this alley now, they're, they're either backing down it or pulling forward and backing out, so garbage, you know, with the new configuration would probably need to be left here closer to the driveway, and it would be a little easier pickup process rather than pulling down this way. I honestly don't know what the sanitation vehicles do in this particular situation and the scale, but we could certainly find out.
And there hasn't been any objections from those two homeowners? And we know that they received the notice, they read it, that, that they're aware of what this would cause?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Alderman Weigl.
Mayor Devine, thank you. On the snow removal, we wouldn't require them to remove that snow if we, if, if we vacate the alley and those two garages, we're not, like, you know, we make you shovel your sidewalk, but we don't make you shovel your driveway, correct?
No. I mean, that's up to the private property owner.
We wouldn't require them to remove the snow from there, but that would fall on those two property owners if they, if they chose to.
That is their discretion at that point, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Grisham.
Just to piggyback on that, has there been discussion with DPW as far as the snow removal and whatnot? It seems that maybe we should have some, some answers, because if these two residents are now responsible for snow removal, we're also looking at our ordinance that you can't place snow into the streets, so where are they putting their snow? I just have, I don't want to, you know, spend too much time on this, but it just raised that question for me, if DPW has been consulted?
I believe so. Our, I mean, been working with our engineering team, and we could certainly get that answered at the recess, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I see our Department of Public Works and our city engineer have sprung to life.
So Dave Webkin, Director of Public Works, to answer the snow plowing question, yes, we would not provide service for that alley since we would not be responsible for that area. Sanitation and recycling, that is something that we would communicate to the residents if this is in fact passed, to have their residential refuse recycling containers out in front at curb side, at the curb.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Did I answer everybody's questions?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Novak.
Dave Webkin, can, then like what Suzette said, where do they put their snow when they remove it if they can't put it in the street?
So they could put it at the curb if you're looking at the refuse recycling containers by the terrace area?
Okay. Thank you.
If I can add, Melinda Dieski, city engineer. We contacted the property owners, all three of the property owners. Kail, city attorneys, helped us out with, with this quite a bit, and they've all, they're going to work together so that the gentleman with the garage that faces the alley is the main user of that, and the other property owners, we're very excited to not have to work with the alley. So we have done outreach with this project.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
And Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
Just to remind everyone, this was, I think, our last gravel alley that was still in use in the city, and we just paved it, and it looks very nice and newly paved, and now we're vacating it. So, so that's very nice of us.
So we're giving them a nice alley. If there are no other questions from the council, then I will ask if there are any questions from the members of the audience on public hearing number three.
I own a house at 2208 South 109th Street. It's the garage at the southern end of the alley. Now, if it's divided between a gas station, which doesn't use the alley, half of it, my neighbor doesn't use it, but I use it, if I shovel my little 49-foot strip outside my garage, are you sure the neighbors are going to do the other 49 feet so I can get out to Grant Street? If the, if the city's not plowing it? Pardon?
Attorney Decker.
Sir, I'm glad you came tonight. We've been trying to get ahold of you for some time.
Oh, really?
Yes. So I just told our...
I got all my mailings from you.
Perfect. Well, either way, you're here now. So if you could talk to the city engineer right after this? We have a solution for this issue, but we just want you to, to be on board with it. So I'm glad you're here.
Because originally, like, my, my parents bought the house in 1947 after World War II, and it was a gravel alley, of course, and my parents tried for 70 years to get a cement alley. And lo and behold, who always said no? My neighbor to the north.
Yes. So, I just told our...
I got all my mailings from you.
Perfect. Well, either way, you're here now. So if you could talk to the city engineer right after this. We have a solution for this issue, but we just want you to be on board with it. So I'm glad you're here.
Because originally, like, my, my parents bought the house in 1947 after World War II, and it was a gravel alley, of course. And my parents tried for 70 years to get a cement alley. And lo and behold, who always said no? My neighbor to the north and the shell station at Lyons Highway 100. So now we have it, but it's not, I don't own it entirely. And also, I have to count on a neighbor to my north to plow, shovel their part of the alley, which right now their garage just empties out on the grant. They have a little short driveway, like it's been since 1947. Okay.
All right.
All right, so just you guys understand the situation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thanks for being here. Any other questions from the audience on public hearing number three? Seeing none, we will close public hearing number three. We will move on to item four, and I will ask the clerk to read it out.
Vacation and discontinuance of an improved alley between West Electric Avenue and West Mobile Street, west of South 54th Street.
Turn it over to staff, Mr. Scher.
Thanks, Mayor. I promise this is public hearing number four despite the three up here. But, so, this section of alley rests between, on the, on the west side of 54th Street, between Mobile and Electric Avenue. Electric is just north of Lincoln Avenue. And the situation here with respect to the vacation of this, of this section of right of way, again, the city engineering and planning are requesting this be vacated. It's no longer being used but for, by city services. It is being used privately, as we understand, but as far as sanitation or city vehicle use down this alleyway, it's no longer being, being used at all. The reason being is that in the 1970s, this section of alleyway here, which extends of the main, extends further south to Electric Avenue, was, was put in, basically making this section here obsolete for city use. This is much narrower, whereas this is much wider, and better serviced for sanitation vehicles and so on. So with respect to that, reducing the maintenance to the, you know, the city, and no longer being used, obsolete for city services, the city's petitioning council to vacate this area. It has been publicly noticed. We've received at least one concern, objection to date with respect to removal of this alley. Again, it's not removal of the alley itself. It is a paved alleyway. It will remain paved. It would just, as a part of the vacation process, it would be split between abutting light industrial uses, both on the north and south sides of that alley. And they can do with it as they please. They could continue to use it for their operations, their business operations, but the city no longer uses that and doesn't see a need to continue to maintain that. For those reasons, planning commission has recommended approval, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council on this public hearing?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
Yeah, Steve, who objected? What was their objection? Is that objection from an abutting property owner which triggers the two-thirds requirement?
Yeah, the concern, yeah, the objection was from the property owner to the north. And they currently use that for their, for their operations, as I understand it. And they would, they would rather, the city, if the city is going to vacate it, they would rather have the city improve that alleyway and then, and then vacate it versus vacating it and it's, you know, it's as-is. So that was the principle that I understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigel.
I see on the map it says storm sewer easement. So does that mean that even though if we do the vacation, those property owners couldn't build anything on it, expand because of that storm sewer?
Yeah, you could, I mean, you could not develop very much in addition, but you could continue to use it for access.
Yeah, they'd be able to drive through or stop and unload. Is there, I don't think there's any loading docks, doors?
Behind the, behind the building, there are some, you know, overhead doors. And I think they, they use some equipment.
On the alley?
It comes out in and out of the, of the backs of these buildings here. There are some overhead doors back in this area.
On the west sides of the building.
Oh, west side of this alley?
Yeah, no, but there's, no, on the west side of the building, there's loading docks, correct?
On the west side, there is an overhead door on the machine shop here, as well as other locations.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Keane.
Are there approaches on both sides of the alley, like, from the street, that anyone driving by could still utilize that alley, even though it's not?
That's true. I mean, when it is, when it is vacated, I guess unless the new owners put up a fence or some kind of barrier, or no trespassing, that would be, that would be the discretion of the, of the owners, how they want to control that or not.
So right now, how it would be, anyone could still drive down it even though it's technically now privately owned?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council on public hearing number four? See, none. Are there any questions from the audience on public hearing number four? Please come up to the microphone again.
Good evening. My name is Greg Kurzacki. The address is 2235 South 54. I own and operate out of the property to the south of the alley. And so we have a machine shop, and the buildings, both buildings, are built on a slope that precludes using the east side of the building for forklift access. And our machine shop utilizes probably 1,000, 3,000 pounds of material per month. And we use that exclusively with, for forklift access to the truck on the east side of the building. That street is pretty quiet, and we can do that safely. If that becomes not usable, then we would have to use Electric Avenue and shut it down every time we have a delivery, which happens maybe two, three times a week. Because forklift is 8,000 pounds, and we may have a 12-foot piece of material that we need to offload on either Electric Avenue or the other avenue. Plus, you have to somehow transport it down the long alley. And so we kind of need the alley. And two, there's a 12, I imagine, a large sewer pipe running underneath that alley lengthwise throughout its whole length. And there's a grate about two-thirds down that alley, which means that you can't do anything with it other than use it as an alley. Also, there's utility poles on, on the south side of that alley, three of them, that have electrical power to all the buildings in that area. So there is, I'm sure, an easement that has to be given to utility companies to maintain that. And somehow, you'd have to give easement to the service of the sewer system as well. And the last repair that was done to that alley has a date stamped in the concrete. It was 197D, 7-0. And there was no other repairs or improvements done other than patching of the concrete that's cracked recently.
Thanks for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions, comments from the audience on public hearing number four?
My name is Daniel Demboyac. I own the building to the north, 2229 South 54th. And like Greg said, we use that alley all the time for unloading. Today, I used that alley, and I had to unload 20-foot lengths of steel. And if that alley isn't accessible, I would, like he said, I'll have to go down Electric. And there's no way that you can safely drive all the way down the alley, go down Electric Avenue, unload your material without any safety concerns to the drivers, me, to anybody, especially you know how people drive nowadays. They don't care. They don't wait. They just go. That alley has no, no use to me at all. It's a liability, as far as I'm concerned. I was advised to stay away from accepting any part of that alley. That, and if, you showed a nice picture of the alley before that you want to give up, whatever. That's fine. You should add a picture of what the alley, that alley looks like right now. It is, you had no problem sending me a letter stating you wanted my building painted because of the neighborhood, the integrity of the buildings and everything else, and I was going to start getting fined every day. Well, okay, so I stuck out $10,000 to get my building painted. So now my building looks great, and so do the other buildings that everybody's maintaining around there. It's a nice neighborhood. So I called and I asked them, maybe there's something you can do with the alley. It's really crumbling. I mean, I have a pic, all kinds of pictures of it. And they said, well, maybe we can put it in for next year's budget. Okay, that was three months ago, or maybe two months ago. All of a sudden, three weeks ago, I get this letter that you just want to vacate the alley. It just, and it's just really horrible, the alley, the way it looks right now. And I have a video of me driving a fork truck with the semis parked out on 54th Street, nice peaceful area to unload a truck. And it would not work if me going down Electric Avenue, unloading any steel trucks. So it is zoned manufacturing there. That alley is being utilized by the buildings, Greg's mine. And I've seen other, the printing company down there, they'll ask me once in a while to go down and unload a semi for them. So it's not just me and Greg, but there's other companies that we help out using that alley instead of trying to drive down Electric Avenue and try to get around, unload. Because you, semis cannot drive down that alley. They're just way too big. They can't make a turn. That's what I have to say.
Thanks very much.
Mayor Devine.
Yep. Alderman Keane.
Steve, a follow-up question. Us vacating the alley doesn't mean that the alley's not going to be there. It can still be utilized by the businesses to unload fork trucks. Is that correct?
Yes.
During summer, that's great. What happens if nobody can get the, taking care of that alley in winter? Then it builds up with ice. We can't get to it. Now I'm hiring plows to do this? Probably is not going to happen. So then I'm going to start utilizing Electric Avenue to unload my trucks.
All right. Thank you. Can you use the microphone, please, so we can hear you on our broadcast? No, if you can go up to the podium, because otherwise they can't hear you on TV for our, for our viewer audience.
Yes, thank you. I just would like to add that if you then vacate the alley and split it in half, the width of the alley is about 20 feet. And there's poles on half of it that take up several feet of that. And so that would literally leave us with like six feet of alley usage if it was divided lengthwise, which still is unusable. If he was to sell the building and the other owner decided to do something else with the alley, then there's no more alley. So vacating and splitting it lengthwise, what does that do? As utility? And you say you can use it, but if he parks his truck in the middle of it, then you can't use it. And I, I understand what vacating means, but you're still not retaining utility of that by vacating and splitting it lengthwise. Thank you.
Mr. Scher. Attorney Decker.
So just for the benefit of the parties that are speaking, when the alley is vacated, it is split down the middle unless there's some other plat that's out there showing otherwise. I assume, based on reversion of title rules, it would be split down the middle. In cases like this, what property owners normally would do when both of them are using it is do a cross-easement so that each party gets the right to use the other half for their purposes, for private business. And that's usually how this type of issue is solved.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience on public hearing number four? All right, we will close our, our fourth public hearing, and I'll ask the clerk to read out public hearing number five.
Conditional use permit for Saul's Auto, a proposed light motor vehicle service use at 5312 West Electric Avenue.
Thank you. Mr. Scher?
Thanks, Mayor. A block away is this property at 53rd and Electric Avenue. And the purpose of the hearing this evening is for the conditional use. Light motor vehicle service does require a conditional use permit process before planning commission and then public hearing before city council. Anytime someone's preparing or proposing a, for instance, an automotive repair shop like Saul's. Saul's does routine maintenance, oil changes, brakes and tire rotations, some car detailing. So it's not heavy lifting or heavy, heavy repair by any means. It is the more routine passenger vehicle maintenance that's taking, would take place at the site. The zoning is light industrial. Light industrial districts categorize vehicle repair, light motor vehicle services as a conditional use requiring this public hearing. The hours of operation are daytime hours, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then Saturdays, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. They'd be closed on Sundays. The, the site plan is a double-fronting lot, both on Electric Avenue and Mobile Street. And the site currently features a large green space fronting Mobile, which would be, offer some, some new trees that have been added as a requirement of the city's planning commission, as well as some foundation plantings and a small tree along Electric Avenue on the south end of the site. The, the parking lot is currently in place. It is paved and would feature parking for, for customer parking stalls along, along the east side of the building, as well as another four employee parking stalls along the middle of the site or north edge of the parking lot, paved surface. And there would be two areas for completed vehicles on the parallel park along the east side of the, of the property. There is another light industrial building directly east of this property, as shown here. And that's basically, these two parking stalls would be parallel parked alongside this building for completed vehicle pickup. The all-access or the repair bay access is available off of Mobile Street here on the north. And then the internal workings of the building, the repair area, repair bays are back here within the north end of the building, north half of the building. And there'd be a small storage area, office and lobby area up in front, fronting Mobile Street. The planning commission has recommended approval. There were some conditions of approval, mainly additional landscaping and screening of refuse enclosures on the site. Those conditions have been satisfied, as shown on the, on the plans, thanks to the applicant. We're also asking for some additional lighting details and a signage permit needed for an east side application, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the common council members on public hearing number five? Seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience on public hearing number five? All right. Then we will close public hearing number five, and we will move on to public hearing number six. And I'll turn it over to staff when you're ready. We might as well be consistent. Let's get the microphone turned on, please. Thanks.
Renewal application for a noise variance permit for Ope Brewing Company at 6751 West National Avenue. This is a noise, a public hearing for the noise variance that Ope Brewing has applied for for this year. They first received one last year in October. The reason for noise variance is because there are certain limitations regarding general noise in residential and commercial manufacturing districts that are listed up on the screen. They were mentioned previously regarding when noise can start and when it can end during the day. Ope Brewing wants to operate outside of the code requirements and beyond the permitted hours. So that's why this noise variance is before you this, today. Last year, as I mentioned, it was approved. The approved hours of operation were Sundays from 12:00 to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday from 4:00 to 10:00, and Friday and Saturday from noon to 10:00 p.m. It also had some requirements added by the council at that point. The outside music was to end at 10:00 p.m. The decibel levelers were not to exceed 60, no amplified music. And the expiration date is the same as a public entertainment premise license, which is why this is coming up now, because the public entertainment license expires on June 30th. So for the current application, that's before you today. So for the current application, that's before you today, the proposed hours are Sunday from 12:00 to 10:00, Monday 4:00 to 10:00, and then Tuesday, Thursday 4:00 to 11:00, and Friday and Saturday 12:00 to 11:00. So the difference from last year, what was approved, was the extended closing times on Tuesday through Saturdays. There's, this will be going before the Public Safety Committee during the recess. There's some options for consideration and recommendations to the council. They, the committee could decide to approve as submitted, deny it, or add conditions like there was added last year, and then recommend granting to the council. That's all I have.
Thanks very much. Are there any questions from the common council on public hearing number six? Okay, hearing none. Are there any questions or comments on public hearing number six from the members of the audience? All right, then we will close public hearing number six. Thank you, everybody who participated in the public hearings. We will move on to item E, which is public participation. This is where the common council may receive info from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Each speaker, once again, must announce their name and address, sign in at the podium, and please limit your comments to one statement of no longer than five minutes. Council and I cannot take action on the topics raised by the speakers, and we can't debate with you either. So, does anybody wish to address us under public participation? If you do, please, same routine as the public hearings.
Hi, my name is Philip Snyder. I live at 800 South 109th Street. I've been a resident there over 43 years. When I bought that house, it is open on both the north and south end at Theodore Trecker and at Walker. Sir Mayor, when you were just campaigning in March, you came and rang my doorbell, and Alderman Wiggle, you came to my door, and I expressed to both of you, and Ms. Keane, in the past, I, this is not my first rodeo here, I hate those barricades. For this northbound traffic on Highway 100 on Fridays and Saturday nights, the police come out and put up some A-frame orange barricades, or no left turn onto Theodore Trecker. Why can't I have the smaller, or put barricades up like you do when there's a block party and, and block that north end of the street temporarily on Friday night and Saturday night for a number of hours, and then let me have access to Theodore Trecker like I've had for 40-plus years? That is a deterrent. I left home Thursday morning, May 23rd, at 7:30. My street was open on both ends. I came home in the middle afternoon on that Thursday, and the north end was blocked. I was traveling east on Theodore Trecker. I had to go to Highway 100 and come around. It's not a big deal for you, but if I continue to go around the block to make turns to come back home, it's, it is a nuisance. And I do not think the problems with the cruisers that were there 10 or 15 years ago is not an issue today. They do not use our street for a turnaround or a place that they would, would meet and park a car and then go do their cruising and come back, which was a problem. I mean, I was involved in those discussions with the police chief and all those things for a number of years. It was a problem. It has not been a problem, and I would like the city to try either no barricades at all, or to put up those temporary ones for those two evenings. I should not have to be deterred 168 hours a week for something that people, and they're probably not even West Dallas residents, that are, are doing that cruising and, and causing the issues that were there in the past. So, thank you for listening to me again, and come and take them barricades down. I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Snyder, I had a feeling we'd see you when it got warmer out, so, good to see you.
And I will continue to come until they're gone.
Well, and I did mention this to the chief after we, we spoke, and it is something where we would happily talk to the neighborhood again and see what everybody up and down that stretch is thinking, and we'll, I don't want to speak for the council members, but, you know, we're a democracy, so we'll listen to the majority of the people.
Yeah, and you had mentioned that about, I've, I've heard that to take a petition around to the people on the block. I'm retired. I can sit and enjoy a cigar out on my park bench, and the people that live south of me never come to the north. Why would I go and ask them if that's a problem for them? I'm in the middle of the block. Theodore Trecker, 700, Walker's 900, my address is 800. I'm in the middle of the block. I would like to be able to go either way. When I see the people that live south of me only go towards Walker, why would I ask them if that's a problem for them?
Mm-hmm.
They don't use it. But it doesn't mean that, you know, it should be blocked off for everybody.
Right.
The squeaky wheel gets the oil.
Thanks for your comments.
All right.
Anybody else wish to address the council under public participation this evening?
Hi, my name is Bob Stuckenberg. I live at 2028 South 78th Street. I've been a resident in West Dallas my entire life. I currently work at Menards and also served as a pastor for Arisen Savior Bible Church for nine years. And the current concern I bring to you today is this recent proclamation of Gay Pride Month. Us as Christians, we, we don't hate, and in fact, we, we love all mankind like Jesus Christ. In fact, God's word tells us that, that God so loved the world that He gave His one and only Son, that whosoever shall believe in Him shall not perish but have everlasting life. And today, we pledged allegiance to the flag, and we said, "One nation under God." And we live in a nation that was founded on biblical principles. So I'm just gonna read a verse to you, and then we'll just take it from there. This comes from 1 Corinthians 6, verses 9 through, I think, 11. "Know ye not that the unrighteous shall not inherit the kingdom of God? Be not deceived; neither fornicators, nor idolaters, nor adulterers, nor homosexuals, nor abusers of themselves with mankind, nor thieves, nor covetous, nor drunkards, nor revilers, nor extortioners, shall inherit the kingdom of God." So when we look at that lifestyle, and we look at what the word of God has to say, it, it groups all these sins into one thing. And interesting, the scripture goes on to say, and it says, "As such as some of you were," but you were washed, you were sanctified, you were justified in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ and by the Spirit of God. So these are all things that can be repented of. They're all things that Jesus Christ died for, and they're all things that are an abomination before God. So we celebrate Gay Pride Month, right? Well, how about an extortioner pride mark? The, the word extortioner could be translated as tax cheaters. Let's celebrate those that don't pay their taxes. Let's put up a flag for that. Thieves won't inherit the kingdom of God. Well, let's have Thief Pride Week. Why not? Let's fly a flag for 30 days to celebrate the people that steal. Just as wrong. And Jesus Christ died for sinners, and it's one thing that everyone has in common here is that they have sinned and have fallen short of the glory of God. Scripture says there's none righteous, no, not one. That all have sinned and come short of the glory of God. And Jesus Christ died for the homosexuals. Jesus Christ died for, for the extortioners and the thieves and the covetous and those that cheat on their wives. He died to set the sinners free. So they shouldn't be celebrated. They, they should be cared for. They should be loved and they should be brought to Jesus. That's my story.
Thanks for your comments. Does anybody else wish to address the council under public participation?
Good evening. My name is Terry Shimke, and I live at 2427 South 81st Street, West Dallas. My parents were residents here. I've, I've enjoyed living in West Dallas, but my, I echo my brother Pastor Bob here in what he just said. And my, it grieves me, Mayor, that you would buy into the celebration of such a perversion. That lifestyle is not a normal lifestyle, and I don't know how much research you have done on that lifestyle and the gay community. There's a man, his name was Carl Whitman, who wrote the Gay Manifesto. Have you ever read that? If you haven't, I suggest you read it, because he lays it out what the gay movement is all about, what their agenda is, and the way they want their, 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 their goals to go. They literally want it in every household, that everyone should accept their lifestyle, no matter how grievous it is. They want, the flag out here is the, another issue, but it's horrible that that flag is flying out here in front of the City Hall. The LGBTQ plus is, do you not, do you understand what the plus is for? The plus is for child sex. The LGBTQ, the gay community, they, their, part of their manifesto is to have sex with chi, children. There's another guy, his name is David Thorson. He, he initiated and founded NAMBLA. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's in the same latitude as the Gay Manifesto. NAMBLA, it's acronym, it's N-A-M-B-L-A, and it stands for North American Man-Boy Love. It's literally a pedophile desire. Their goal is to remove age consent laws. They're pushing this agenda, they're pushing their lifestyle, they're pushing this perversion, which is not a normal lifestyle. Who could ever imagine or think of having sex with little children is a normal thing, but they want everybody to think that it's okay, that's normal, accept it. If you don't, well, then they label you as a homophobe, racist, whatever. As my brother Pastor Bob said, though, Christ is the answer. These guys that wrote the manifesto, they, they're just filled with anger. They hate all kinds of people and groups, and it's just an amazing thing to read, and you can't help but see the anger in these people. And I would have to say that they are angry because they don't know God. They have, they're, they're, that's life without God. And if you proclaim to be a Christian, Mr. Mayor, you would know what the Bible says, "From the beginning to the end is God's word," and it's, it's-
Sir, just to let you know, you've got 25 seconds left, your five minutes.
All right, thank you. Every word in that Bible is written for us to know and to learn and to live by the best we can. These people do not live that way. And I, I hope you have a change of heart and take that flag down and get rid of that proclamation. It's completely wrong and disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under public participation this evening?
Hi, my name is Juan Balderson. I'm not a West Dallas resident, but I go to church here in West Dallas, and I shop here, and I eat a lot of your good restaurants here. Pegasus is one of my favorite ones.
Can you give us your address, too?
1910 East Howard. I'm from St. Francis.
Thank you.
I was, when I drove by, I saw the flag in there, and then we started talking, and I said, "I have to go and say something, because that lifestyle is not the normal lifestyle." Now, I have family members that are in that lifestyle, but I don't approve them, but I still love them. And I still try to help them when I can and do things for them, but they know where I stand. And to keep promoting that with that flag there, I mean, I just love that we started off with the pledge allegiance. It really was nice that you guys do that. That flag, the American flag, is the only flag that should be flying up there, or maybe the state of Wisconsin or the city of West Dallas. No other group should be up there. The American flag represents all of us, every color, every race, religion, whatever lifestyle you practice. Even the gay lifestyle, the American flag represents. To promote that above anything else, like, like Pastor Bob says, are we gonna start putting the BLM, BLM, the Antifa flag, the Nazi flag, the Ku Klux Klan flag? We're not gonna, we're gonna, we're not gonna do that, because that's not accepted. To, to give them preference above everybody else is wrong. Now, I don't know how this council, or how that was approved, Mr. Mayor. If the citizens of West Dallas, was there an amendment passed out? We're thinking of putting the flag out. We would like your opinion. I don't know how you guys came to that agreement, but we are going to let West Dallas residents know that you people stand for that by flying that flag. Now, we pass out some flyers here during State Fair, and we go to State Fair every year. We love the State Fair. So we'll be passing flyers out, letting know that the, the people, the council approve of that kind of lifestyle. So hopefully the West Dallas residents will be calling you and letting them know their opinion. I hope they do, but if they don't, all, all we're called is just to tell the truth and to represent the gospel and tell people the truth. And, and what you do with it, it's on you, but some of you are up for reelection in a couple of years, and hopefully there'll be enough people that are against it that know that you represent that pedophilia and stuff like that, that hopefully some of you will be voted out of office. Thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to address the council under public participation this evening?
Thank you. First of all-
Will you have your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm getting to that. Yes, under the topic of, of this specific thing, obviously I'm on the same topic, a pastor here and the two others. Personally, I have been attacked physically, as well threatened. I'd like to be able to refrain from my address, or even my name. I could say, "Good citizen here, a resident in the Milwaukee metro," if that's suitable. I appreciate that. Thank you.
You could just give us a close intersection, I guess, if you want. Or a neighborhood, even.
Ogden and Farwell.
Thanks.
Okay. Very good. Yes, this is to everybody, but definitely addressing those in authority. God has called every individual, especially even the governing authority, for God has created civil authority, civil government. As I looked at Romans 13, trying to think of some of the scriptures, which you, you all need to hear, "For is rulers," as you are rulers in a sense, as we're locally here in West Dallas, "those in authority. Rulers are not a terror to good, but to works, uh, terror to good works, but to evil. To not condone evil and to protect the good and punish the evil." That is, those in authority, all of you here, "For He is God's minister to you for good," speaking to all of us publicly. You guys are to be ministers of God, being called in the position you are, whether you're a Christian or not. That is what your calling is to be, and that's Romans 13. Also, before I get to Psalm 2, which is another good, direct thing to those in a governing authority, I want to look for everybody here, as Pastor Bob, and thank you, Terry, and such, that brought these truths forth, but yes, the good scripture, of course, of saying, "For God so loved the world, He gave His only begotten Son. Whosoever believe in Him will not perish but have everlasting life." But here, it says, "For the things that we should not accept is what-" But here, it says, "For the things that we should not accept is what even as Romans 1 brings out." I'll try not to read the whole thing. He says, starting in Romans 1, starting in verse 18, he says, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness." Unrighteous, in other words, evil. Evilness of men who suppress the truth and unrighteous, because what may be known of God is manifested in them. In other words, we're all image bearers of God. God has created that, and we're all inclined in a heart, even to the strongest atheist. That atheist come up to me and tell me I don't believe in God. Well, I'm a Christian, I don't believe in atheists. But anyway, "Suppress the truth and unrighteous, because what may be known of God is already manifested in them, for God has shown it to them." I'm going to skip down 11. His eternal power in God is so that they are without excuse. It is, and that says, "We're not thankful, but became futile in their thoughts," become foolish, in other words. "Their hearts were darkened," and it's what God would turn over repugnant mind, as we reject the very principles of God. Professing to be wise, though, that yet we become fools. And the most foolish thing is to accept something as what men would do to each other, and then even redefine the very definition of God's creation of marriage. A man and woman taking a covenant of marriage is ordained by God, and I have to say, stressed nowadays, "Man and woman." Even that has been perverted, where people can't even come to the knowledge of the truth. Professing to be wise, just become fools. And this is integrated throughout our society. West Dallas, throughout our Milwaukee metro, and children are so confused today. Suicide rates are up, and we got a flag right out there, showing how stupid and foolish we are. Please, take it down. For those who even approve some things are worthy of death. Now, of course, not only just a physical death, but...
Sir, you've got 20 seconds left on your five minutes.
Second death, thank you. Second death, which says in Revelation, "Those who separated God, that did not accept what God so loved you so much for, given His only begotten Son," there is a second death. That's a warning. Warning to you in positions, ladies and gentlemen, that you are to be ministers of God, upholding what is good and hating what is evil. Thank you very much. Is that mine?
Thank you. Any other people wish to address the council under public participation?
Good evening. I'm John Anopa, property owner at 6751 West National. Just a couple of ideas. I was on vacation a few months ago up in the UP, and it was refreshing to take a walk during the middle of the day to go from brewery to brewery. They had a district that was outlined by a map or on a map, and each vendor had a cup with a sticker on it that was dated and allowed people to go from one place to the next and have a beer, or whatever that might be, an alcoholic beverage. But just a suggestion to start a brainstorming opportunity to create a district where there's more foot traffic during the day of people who are going from business to business and promoting each other's businesses. So, again, I don't have a defined map in my mind as to where this might occur, but hopefully, it might include Ope. There's many directions to go with that, but just thought I'd bring up that idea. And then, one other idea I had was, during the day, there's certain, obviously, different neighborhoods of the community that there was a lot of business or traffic on the roads at certain times in the last multiple decades, where there is not any longer. And there's a lot of traffic lights that, obviously, there's concern about negligent driving. But if we could have a lot more flashing yellow lights and flashing red lights, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address the council under public participation this evening? All right. That will then conclude public participation, and we will move on to announcing our standing committees. They will be meeting during recess. If you are here for a license or a permit or an agenda item, please take a look at the agenda for the room numbers, or if you need direction when we break for recess, please ask one of the council members or I, or a staff person to make sure we get you into the right room. Item G is the mayor's report. I just have a couple items this evening. First, I want to thank everybody who helped put together our Memorial Day celebration a couple Mondays ago. I want to thank the staff at Tanner Paul Legion Post. I want to thank Chelsea and the DPW and all of the members of the community and council that attended. It was a really nice ceremony with some very good speeches and really captured the specialness of that day. I also want to say the same for everybody that worked to put on our à la carte festival last Sunday in our downtown, including the downtown bid and city staff that pulled everything together to play their part, as well as just all the participants in the community as a whole. I want to just quickly mention that, at long last, the Ethiopian Coffee Shop has opened on 77th and Greenfield. There was a soft opening last week, and she seems to be, I've heard she takes credit cards now, the credit card machine is up and running, so feel free to check them out on 77th and Greenfield. I want to remind everybody that this Friday, the Tour of America's Dairyland Race is coming to West Dallas. The route will be throughout the Beecher Street neighborhood. The races start at, I think, 10:30 or 10:45 in the morning, 10:45 in the morning, and go probably till about 9:00 at night. So if you have time to stop over there Friday, it's supposed to be a beautiful day. Check that out. Lastly, I also want to mention on, just recently, I was in a conversation with Chief Mitchell, and recently, the police department during evening rush hours conducted targeted traffic enforcement to help reduce reckless driving. And the officers focused on several areas in the city, monitoring for red light and speeding violations. The locations were picked based on crash data and higher rates of crashes coupling with speed and red light violations. So I just want to share that during this four-hour deployment period, officers conducted 35 traffic stops, resulting in 19 citations and 15 written warnings. There were citations written for speeding, red light violation, no valid driver's license, operating while suspended, seat belt violations, and operating without insurance. There were some warnings given for red light violations and a couple warnings for speeding. So I just want to thank the police department for this effort. There will be more. And I think I can safely speak for every member of this common council that we are well aware of the concerns that our neighbors and businesses have about reckless driving, and we are not going to stop paying attention to those concerns. You deserve to feel safe walking around the city, and you deserve to feel safe biking around the city, and you deserve to feel safe driving around the city. So we are going to continue to ramp up traffic enforcement. Excuse me. That does conclude the mayor's report this evening. Are there any reports from the elder persons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
I'm proud of my two gay kids. Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Happy Pride Month. Alderman Novak, Alderwoman Novak, sorry.
That's okay. I kind of wanted to touch on that, too. I just want to say that I am very thankful to be part of this council and the fact that we are a council that simply focuses on spreading positivity and continuing to move forward and inclusion. And I don't think any, I don't want to speak for anyone up here, but I don't think any of us promote anything that is illegal in any way, shape, or form. We simply promote positivity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderwoman Knowling.
I would also like to say happy pride from District 2, or at least myself in District 2. I think we speak together. And just a reminder to some of our younger friends in the LGBTQ plus community, that the Trevor Project has a text line. If you are struggling, you can text START2678678 and speak to someone that can help you. Thanks.
Thanks very much. Any other elder person's comments? Alderwoman Grove.
Not exactly on the same line, but Alderman Turner was able to attend the Hope Walk at Liberty Heights on the 31st, and we really appreciate all the work that the health department put into it, all the providers and the community groups who were there. It was really well attended, a great event, lots of resources, and I recommend anybody take a walk around the park and check out the positivity posted there.
Alderwoman Grove, are you going to become the elder person that reminds me of what I forget every week now? Like, it was Alderman Weigl?
If you'd like.
Just so you know, you went and beat some folks' flag on one thing about the bike race.
On the bike race?
He complained to Neil.
Alderman Weigl.
Mayor Devine. Thank you for touching on the bike race this Friday. I wanted to remind everybody, with its change from the Tuesday to the Friday, it's kind of a promotion for the event, but there's a new race, there's a new event in this series now, the Hand Cycle Bike Race. So this is, the Tour of America's Dairyland is this pro-am, so it's professional and amateur bicyclists racing at multiple venues around southeastern Wisconsin. This is the third year that they're here in West Dallas. But because where we are in the schedule now, we have a hand cycle race, and so that's at 3:45 PM. So that's for bicyclists who, for whatever reason, can't use their legs. So if you have never had the opportunity to go see that, that is really cool. And then, of course, the real race that everybody wants to see is the pro-women with the, I believe both the Schneider sisters are racing. And that's at 7:00 PM. That's their last race of the night. So see you all there Friday.
Thank you, Alderman Weigl. Any other reports from the elder persons?
Mayor Devine.
Alderwoman Grisham.
I would like to take an opportunity to wish all of the fathers on our council a happy Father's Day weekend, as well as all of our gay and straight fathers in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Halverson.
Two things, happy pride. And Wednesdays, I will now be at the Senior Center at 10 o'clock in the morning till 11:30 doing karaoke. So come in with your best songs. We can do some Pantera, you know, Johnny Cash, whatever you want to do, for an hour and a half every Wednesday.
Thank you. That's a hard one to follow. Any other elder person's reports? All right. Then we will move on to item I, approval of the minutes.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
I move for approval of the minutes of the May 21st, 2024 Common Council Meeting.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderwoman Keen. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing down, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Then we have no standing committee reports under item J, so we will move to K, which is the consent agenda. We had one request, I believe, to refer 23A?
23A.
23A to the Economic Development Committee. Does somebody want to make that motion?
Mayor Devine. I move that we refer item 23A to the Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Okay. If there is no objection, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, on the balance, Alderman Haas.
And then, on the balance, if there are no other requests for referrals to committee, then I move for approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderwoman Knowling. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Elder Person Keen.
Aye.
Novak.
Aye.
Knowling.
Aye.
Roth.
Aye.
Turner.
Aye.
Weigl.
Aye.
Grisham.
Aye.
Grove.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Halverson.
Aye.
Ten in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Haas.
I move that the council stand in recess until the conclusion of our committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderwoman Grisham. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in recess.